Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of what is actually Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025. Would you kindly join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I corrected Faith. She had 2024 on there. And of course, I completely overlooked Tuesday versus Wednesday. Folks, for you at home, tonight, we have a relatively short meeting. We do need to conduct some business that is timely in nature. And so we are discussing tonight the potential of applying for a transportation improvement grant. This is yet another funding source towards the Aspen Wall Bridge. You may recall, originally, a few years back, we applied for the Bridge New York program. $1.6 million. We've received some supplemental funding since then. Given the fact that a lot of capital projects are coming in above and beyond the original estimates, we are seeking now some funding from the Transportation Improvement Grant. It's due in just two days, as a matter of fact. And with thanks to the folks at the Dutchess County TPC Transportation. Of course, I always forget the acronym.
Council.
Council, PTC, Dutchess County Public Transportation Council. That sounds good. Mark DeBald, in particular, for sending out notices on this. So we're doing that. We discussed the employee healthcare plan renewal options. We'll be taking action, hopefully, tonight. And we are also looking at the potential of applying, as we mentioned in our last meeting, for a Department of State Local Government Efficiency Grant. This would be funding for the package plant, the sewer treatment plant. The local government efficiency grant program from the state is to incentivize communities to consider anything from shared services to consolidation to, in this case, there's an avoidance of duplication by utilizing the existing sewer treatment plant that the village currently owns and operates. We'll be eliminating the need to have our own for the traditional neighborhood district. And importantly, this will provide, this will go towards providing capacity for the Cooking Ham property proposal. We are going to go through tonight, for the benefit of our annual February meeting, the legislative platforms and some discussions about the individual items and whether we will support them. And then we have some correspondence. Okay. Announcements. I don't know that we have announcements for tonight, except to say, stay tuned. Hopefully, by next week, we'll have the spring events announcements, all the dates put together, as we often do. Spring is a very busy time for us in the town. Anybody have an announcement they'd like to make before we get started?
I'll just add that the Salt Hill watershed community was intending to meet this evening, and they had to delay that. The heat is off at the Almendorf right now.
Oh, wow.
So that will be rescheduled. And if anybody wanted to go, you still have a chance.
Okay, very good. Well, that worries me that the heat is off at the Almendorf, however. Yeah. Okay. So anyone else have any announcements? All right. If not, public comments? Do we have any public tonight? We do not. Grace, would you like to make some comments?
No, I think you're right.
No. All right. So why don't we dive right on in? Folks, we've been working with our engineers, Hudson Valley Engineering Associates, to take a look again, estimating we continue to refreshen the costs that we anticipate as we move closer and closer to construction of the bridge replacement on Aspen Wall. And just remind you, design has been submitted to DOT for their approval. And so what we have here is the application for additional grant funding. So this is an 80/20 split. We'd be looking at $560,000 in grant funds. And we would have to match $140,000. This brings the total project cost to about $3 million. For the folks at home. Infrastructure funding is important. We've probably all been following along to see how infrastructure resources will continue or not to be passed down from the federal government through the states into the local municipalities. Suffice it to say that none of us have, on the local level, the resources to do these types of capital projects, very important capital projects, without the support of the state and the federal government. And we appreciate those partnerships. So any questions on this, folks? I've got a good feeling about this, man. And our chances.
Do we have a timeframe yet, or is it brutal?
No. DOT is reviewing the final submission, so not yet. I mean, there was hope to have a '25 construction. It's either '25 or '26. We'll see at this point.
That's what I was wondering, right?
Yeah. At this point, it may take till '26 for the ground to fill up. All right. This is resolution number. Anybody want to guess?
Eight.
Good guess.
Number eight.
Number eight. Date of January 22nd, 2025. Authorizing the application for additional funding through, let's change that typo, Dutchess County Transportation Improvement Program. Commitment of local share of the implementation and funding in the first instance of 100% of the federal aid and state. Arca Selly program, eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project for Salt Hill Road Bridge and appropriating funds therefore. And then we would tap into our appropriated A fund reserve. And who would like to move?
So moved.
Thank you, Jacob. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are essentially just about finished with that application. Just waiting for, we'll upload the certified resolution tomorrow and send it on its way. Bless you. Item number two. Employee healthcare, a lot of healthcare plan renewal. We discussed several options. Did some, ran through a bunch of different scenarios, utilization ratios, looked at the risk reward. I couldn't come up with a better plan than the current one as far as the risk reward for the costs. You know, depending upon the utilization rates of the HRA. My thought is that we should probably stick with the MVP eight.
Well, just to clarify, when you're saying, you know, the...
Silver, yeah.
Well, when we're reviewing them, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out, you know, could we get a lowered premium that would save money for the town, but wouldn't result in a sky-high deductible
Right.
for our employees and still have an equivalent amount of coverage?
Right.
And so what we came down to was that there was not enough
Incentive.
incentive to change to another program and provide the same level of benefits for our employees.
Well said.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to concur?
Concur, yeah.
And I'll just point out that my recollection was, as we went into this year, we were told that healthcare costs generally, we're going to be going up between 6% and 9%. So the 8% falls in line with that.
Yeah.
The old lacrosse plans, you know, all the plans.
Yeah.
So it's not out of line.
Okay. Well, we don't have our resolution, just a motion. So I'd like to go ahead and move that we continue with the existing MVP silver eight plan for the plan year of March 1, 2025 to February 28 of 2026. Who would like to second my motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, William. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number three. Moving right along. Make this quickly as possible. We have a resolution authorizing submission of an application for New York State Local Government Efficiency Grant. So the maximum that we can apply for is $250,000 per municipality. And this would be for additional funding to go towards the sewer plant expansion to accommodate both the TND CC and the workforce slash affordable housing project that we are working on in coordination with RACO. And I think this is a wonderful application. It checks a lot of the boxes there. These are competitive dollars. We've applied in the past for LGE funds and have not received an award. But I'm hoping, because this has this important housing component, and this is the necessary... I mean, without this, what do we have? So any thoughts?
Well, I think it's great. I'm curious whether, like, you know, when, back in the fall, I guess, when we were doing the sewer district formation, and Brandy presented those numbers, you know, there were sort of projections of how much cost a particular property owner would bear. Based on how this grant is framed and the way that we're collaborating with the village, would these funds actually reduce that bottom line for a property owner in the TND or not directly?
Yes, it would, because a portion of this, assume we were to get the entire funding, would go towards
Yeah.
the TND, and a portion would go up towards the Cooking Ham.
Okay.
The northern and the southern, let's call it. So yes, it would. It would assist with that. Commercial, mixed-use, residential, workforce, affordable housing, all the things that I think are important to the state government right now. And certainly, it's infrastructure related. So not knowing what those dollars are going to be looking like in the future. And I understand, one of the executive orders that came out of Washington was a pause for 90 days on some of the funding. So hopefully, that doesn't impact our community in a negative way.
And so just to clarify, we're applying for $500,000, as it says here. So you mentioned $250,000
Per municipality, right.
So it's because the village and the town are working together on these projects.
Exactly. This is resolution number nine. Date it January 22nd. And a lot of work.
Robert, did you want that first paragraph, then, to be revised to be a joint amount of up to $500,000 to finance a portion of the cost of a municipal sewer and workforce housing project? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, let's do that.
Pursuant to a shared sewer service agreement?
Yeah. Why don't we, Chris, maybe also include the traditional neighborhood development, mixed-use, traditional neighborhood development? Let's get some language in there that better describes. I mean, we'll have it in the application, but...
Okay. So the project...
Well, I guess, Chris, does it need to be in here? I mean, the...
Well, we just need to, I mean, I'm just trying to indicate in general terms
Yeah.
what applicants you're submitting, right?
Yeah.
Well...
Because they don't have the document in front of us to refer to.
Yeah.
But as Robert was just explaining, it's the sewer project overall, which would serve both of those things. So do we need to put that in here?
It's up to you. If we just say municipal sewer, that's okay. But I thought you wanted to, you know, refer to those other issues.
I think we should.
Say municipal sewer, that's fine.
I think we should, Chris, because I think we're going to submit this resolution. Let's include it as much as we can. In fact, best interest of the town of Red Hook to submit an application for the local government efficiency grant on behalf of both the town and the village of Red Hook in the total amount of up to $500,000 to finance. And then add the verbiage that you suggested.
So we're saying something like, a portion of the cost of supporting municipal sewer, of municipal sewer project, a project for municipal sewer, including TND and workforce housing?
Yes.
Doing a shared sewer agreement?
Yeah.
Service or service agreement?
Yeah. I think we have to put something in there about necessary infrastructure, something like that, so that it's clear in the resolution that the creation of the TND and the workforce affordable housing won't happen without the infrastructure.
Does it make sense to do a separate whereas, sort of laying out the status of things, saying, you know, whereas the town has been working towards expanding sewer access to, you know, the TND, to the workforce housing? And, you know, something like that, saying that the work that's been happening and how this is an important part of accomplishing those goals? And then have the second one
Yeah.
be the part about submitting the...
Chris, I think that's a great idea. What do you think about that? Maybe having a couple more whereas?
Can you just repeat that? Because I can't hear.
Sorry.
Yeah. I was saying, having a separate whereas, laying out the work that we've been doing to expand the sewer to these other areas for those goals. Right? So saying that the town is working towards establishing a sewer district, expanding the sewer line for the purposes of economic development, for affordable workforce housing. And then the next one being the submission of the application for the grant, right? So having one be, these are the goals we're trying to reach. We've been working on them. And the next one being the whereas about the, you know, it's the best interest of applying for the grant.
Yeah. I wouldn't even mind a double negative there. You know, something that references the fact that we have an inability
Yeah.
to...
These goals cannot be realized without
Without...
this infrastructure.
Right. Without the infrastructure and the commensurate funding.
We could potentially move on to the next agenda item and give Chris a minute to further mention, and then come back and vote.
Let's do that. Chris? We're gonna, did you hear that?
No.
Oh. Julia suggested...
They're uniformed, yeah.
Julia suggested we move to the next agenda item while we give you additional time to modify the resolution.
All right.
She's always so thoughtful. Okay. So let's do that. And that'll take us a while, I have to say.
The next thing?
The next thing, yeah.
The DOT?
Once again, the AOT Legislative Program. Here are their proposed resolutions. Not surprisingly, resolution number one is to preserve and support home rule. Let me scroll down there, shall we?
It's in there every year.
I didn't see that coming.
It's in there every year.
Every year.
I'm not sure if there's been a municipality that didn't support this, but... Okay. I won't spend too much time on this. Do we need to? I think we feel very strongly about it and some of the particular areas, speed limits, right? So on and so forth. Okay. We're good with resolution number one. We want to support that. Number two. Maintain and increase aid and incentives to municipalities funding. It's all about funding local municipalities. If you take a look at our villages, how wonderful they are, but every time they need to do a large capital project, just how difficult it is without getting support from partners and from above. This is a very small pot of money that we get. Aim, I think it's been historically for the town about $32,000, $33,000 a year. It hasn't been adjusted for inflation. And so we'd like to support that, I think, right?
Yep.
Okay. Now, number three is a little bit tricky. Who wouldn't want to see general ambulance service be declared an essential service? Probably every municipality that's not prepared to provide that service or financially has the wherewithal to provide that service. Obviously, we all want to ensure that that continues in the future, and that's why this board and others have been supportive of our volunteer firefighters and emergency responders. However, taking this step to declare it an essential service, and of course, the other side is to provide service funding. So do we want to nuance our support of this? Do we want to? What do we want to say about this, folks? Because I can tell you, in my other role as the president of the county supervisors and mayor's association, it is a topic that comes up every meeting and has really reached crisis proportions. We have municipalities paying, tiny ones, paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars right now for contracts. And oftentimes, it's for an ambulance or ambulance sitting there. Maybe they'll get a call that day, one call, maybe. But because they don't have the volunteers that we have in this community and, you know, we're not, you know, always necessarily going to be comfortable that that's going to continue in the future because the number of folks that are able to take that training that is required by the state seems to decrease over time. Any thoughts?
Well, I would say this. If you look at the monthly police report and the number of medical emergencies that they respond to, I would say there is a need, although the local, the village police tends to be the first responder anyway. We're six miles from the hospital. I can tell you from personal experience that the Dutchess County ambulance crew, while they're extremely well-trained and quality people, they're not as responsive just due to the locations of from where they're coming from. And I was in Tivoli, and I watched a guy drop. And I called it in. Took 21 minutes for an ambulance to arrive. Fortunately, he survived. But that's really sort of an unacceptable response time. And we could have put him in a car and driven down northern Dutchess faster. So, you know, it is a tricky issue.
Yeah. And I want to back up and just let you all know, if you don't already know, that our county exec has put in place a program, which is really a trial, if you will, for three years using ARCA money to sort of backstop. They have currently about eight different locations
Where they come from.
where they are situated to respond if the calls go out and there's not a quick response for EMS. So this is not a permanent solution, but in response to a lot of the municipalities being at this both financial and also service crisis levels, it's a way to sort of mitigate over the short term and to provide additional level. I can tell you, my colleagues all want us to move to where the county coordinates this service. So we've got, you know, both short term and maybe some medium-term thinking on how to address this. The key, of course, with this resolution is what level of service funding? How would it work? What's the rollout? I think that my colleagues feel like we're not necessarily in the best position to deliver this efficiently if you're in a teeny, tiny rural township, you know, and you're required to have service, you know, throughout the day and night, and you're not having calls, really. It's a large expense. And you're struggling to figure out how to share that expense and that service on an efficient manner with neighboring townships. And that's what they're trying to do right now. Many of them who don't have the volunteers that we do.
So is the sort of thought there that we're making it an essential service might not be the best call for the smaller municipalities? But maybe the funding makes sense? You could sort of provide more of...
Once you, yeah. Once you declare it an essential service, the fire is essential. So we must have coverage over our districts. Once you declare it an essential service, be prepared. You know, we know, we know that we have challenges now, you know, with coverage for things that we need to do. Dual control officers, as an example, that you find. There aren't a lot of options there.
So if this was to be in place, would that preclude some of these more creative solutions of sharing with multiple communities? Each community would have to have their own?
Yeah. It's not clear. You see, they're talking about, you know, the task force that they put together. And they are talking about new authority for counties to create special districts. That's important because we do need that aspect of it. But I'm just not sure if it's a cart before the horse type of thing. But obviously, we want to make sure our residents have that, you know, type of service that they rely on.
Special districts, right? For counties to set up districts? So like, I wonder if that would incorporate something like what the kind of the county's pilot program is? If you have eight districts, a sort of patch? Or maybe more, whatever.
And the state is studying Dutchess County, what it's trying right now to see how it's a potentially an effective, short-term...
Has there been discussion? Ambulance costs about a million dollars, appropriately outfitted ambulance. You know, many...
Oh, gosh. No, 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 no. Not a million. No. We did, we did, before your time, we did an ambulance.
We did an ambulance? Because I know that when they had the fire in Tivoli, that was the one vehicle that was, and they had to, I thought it was about a million bucks.
Given what the costs are?
No, but it was... Gosh, you know, you're going to jog my memory. And I realize it was quite a few years ago. I know we allocated about $100,000 towards the ambulance for Red Hook Fire. I want to say it was around a quarter of them, maybe?
But I guess where I was going with this was that many local volunteer fire departments have an ambulance.
Yeah, yeah.
And they have people that are certified EMTs, which is essentially the same function as this. And when I was present and had to call that matter in Tivoli, it was actually about 50 yards from the firehouse. They did not respond. And some of that had to do with when the call went through the EMS system, how they routed that call. So, you know, I think that some of it is they're going to have to re-engineer...
Was this recent, or was that...
This was two summers ago.
Two summers ago.
It was at the bakery, and a guy dropped, and he was, you know, and he was bad.
Well, that's, you know, part of the issue of the county coordinating is how you're going to prioritize where the call goes. Because, I mean...
Right.
Right now, there's this county plan
Yeah.
and county contractor. So the calls go there first before they go, like, to a local fire department.
I think they poll. I'm not sure that that's the way it works. I think they go out, they poll. There's not a quick response. Their goal is to try and get the response time. And they have already charted the different municipalities, the average response time. They want to get down to less than ten minutes. So basically, nine minutes is sort of.
No, this one didn't work because the ambulance dispatch was the Dutchess. Yeah, this is two years ago, but they.
You're talking about Northern Dutchess, by the way? Okay, that's a private, that's a private.
And that's who showed up. But it still took twenty-one minutes for any medical emergency staff to arrive. So, you know, and that gave me a pretty serious pause. And back to the point where I would just flag down a cop and have them drive me lights and sirens to the, you know, to the ER. That would actually probably be a more efficient way to.
Well, these are, these are part of the challenges. We live in what was formerly a rural area and, you know, it's not uncommon to go from one end of the municipality, even if you had your own dedicated situated, they could be on another call.
Well, they could be on another call, that, yeah.
So that's, you know, part of this program is to cover when existing calls are underway and that typical responder isn't there.
Well, it was just troubling.
And I think that the need is clear, right? Like, and there's a reason that there's solutions like that that are being tried out. I think that for the purposes of this legislative agenda for AOT, it's something that is sort of pushing the state to create funding sources, pushing them towards recognizing that the need exists.
I think it's a good thing, right?
I'm comfortable with sort of pushing it because it's not going to be adopted like this with the principles or what's important.
Right, we just want to make clear that we don't want to have one thing happen with the other thing happening, that we wake up one day. As many of our colleagues have.
Very important.
And they, hundreds of thousands of dollars, their tax burden has increased dramatically.
I mean, this may be the opposite of what we were talking about before. Maybe we put this into one resolved instead of two.
And then we don't want to, whatever, I mean, I guess it's a long way from being policy, but you wouldn't want to preclude the kind of creative solutions that are being tested out here. If it comes through as a mandate, you want that to be flexible enough to accommodate local situations.
Right.
And I think some of that's in the background.
The framework for the county to do it. So three-year pilot, that they're using their ARCA money, that's why they can do it. Because they have the flexibility, as did we, to put money towards the sewer, for example, that we wouldn't typically be able to do. Okay. Always a good time to thank our volunteers that do answer the call. Increase the salary cap for retired public officials returning to public service. So this is a sort of a logistical thing. You have folks who are public officers and employees. They retire. It's not uncommon that they wake up one day and go, well, you know, I kind of like doing my job or I kind of like working for my community. And they come back and they want to do a part-time or something like that. And there are limitations, income limitations.
I think it was thirty-six thousand?
Uh, now thirty-five?
Yeah, thirty-five.
And this would help us. So.
It's interesting that it used to have an annual adjustment and then it stopped. I wonder why that was, but.
Yeah, and of course, you know, during sort of the wage inflationary period. So certainly, we need, we need workers, right? We need, we need those on the bench until such time as the bots are, have been programmed. Okay, supportive, yeah?
Yep.
Okay. Reform Tier Six of the New York State and local retirement system for the folks at home. The state has a pension program. I won't go into all the details because we will be here until I retire. But there are six different tiers, no, are there six? Yes, six. And so some of the proposals, they feel, obviously, let's just backtrack for a moment. Some of these changes were made by Albany because looming pension obligations by municipalities can be a giant balloon that the taxpayers, much like, you know, there's lots of discussion about budget deficits on the federal level. On the local level, your obligations, you want to make sure that the pension programs and the benefits don't come back to roost from a budgetary standpoint and that you can fulfill those obligations. So they made some changes back over, a little over a decade ago in order to make it more sustainable, make it solvent. And so now this is to try to address maybe a little bit of that so that it still remains attractive to folks. It says, the resolution says, whereas reforms to Tier Six have made jobs in the public sector less attractive and thus made it harder for the state and local governments to recruit and retain workers. And so that's the gist of why they want to do that. They're calling for some reforms, but don't really go into much detail about that, just about local, you know, the employee contributions towards that program. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, I mean, they, in general, I'm supportive. But in the wording that they have here, they, it attributes this in part to Tier Six not providing enticing enough benefits for people to join public service, which, you know, I'm sure maybe it plays into it, but I don't know that that's someone's decision. So, you know, wages in New York is still the issue.
Wages, yeah.
Paying more than, you know, pay pensions.
Well, and other benefits too. Not just pension. I mean, I think folks are happy to have a job that has a pension, whether it's private or public sector at this point. I don't know that we've ever had anybody ask, how does the Tier Six program work and what might I expect?
I was a Tier Six employee for the state for four years. I think it's different in municipalities, but the state actually has, at the state level, some flexibility. In order to offset their costs, they created a TIAF-CREF program, which is essentially a deferred compensation in addition to the regular deferred compensation. And it was actually very attractive. I mean, you put in six percent, they matched eight. It was, I personally thought it was a pretty, pretty attractive arrangement. But I could see, like, the three-year and five-year issue on the high, you're high. I had employees who worked for me at the state who complained about the five years as opposed to three, which is sort of standard. So.
I think all the other tiers are three years.
That's right. And I never understood why it was five.
Trying to spread out, spread out the cause.
Yeah, because they don't want to, there was a lot of spiking effect. I think on the news, there was something about one of the, I think it was a state police officer, right? Or was it city police officer that had some two-hundred thousand dollars a year overtime? Or is that a city officer?
Right, yeah.
I don't think so.
Because that goes, that goes into the calculation for your budget.
So that spiking that you pay out on, you know, over decades, which may not be representative of what the, what the employee earned in a typical year. What do we say on this, folks? Overtime earnings are now excluded from pension contribution rates for two more years.
Well, I do, like, as Bill said, I don't see why, you know, I'm supportive of the three years versus five years. So all the tiers are the same.
I didn't really, frankly, until I read this, didn't know that it was that big of an issue. Now, you know, when I worked for the state, and CSAA was one of two unions that represented the employees there, there were income disparities. There was like a line in the sand between those who were career civil service and those who were MC, management confidential. Need and say, I remember had a lot of them. So that's probably why it didn't seem as much of an issue to me because there's more discretion in pay for the, for the MC employees. But.
I mean, so when you're in the room, you know, expressing support or lack thereof for these resolutions, what does that look like? Do you, because some of them are so clearly important and timely for our municipality and some like this less so, maybe? But it doesn't necessarily mean we're opposed? And I don't know what your options are in terms of.
Well, I think last, was it last year you had me get up and nuance support for one of the resolutions? Which I did, and I got up and spoke on the issue.
And people from other towns get them.
Yeah. And all surprising, right?
It's true.
There are nine-hundred-and-thirty-three township.
It's a big.
I mean, I don't, I don't feel a need to speak on this one particularly. I don't feel as clear about it as I felt.
Yeah, I mean, I see the, I see the issues, you know, I do. I try to project out five years to make sure that the budgeting is such that we don't wake up one day and go, oops. And, you know, doing pension calculations is not something I can necessarily do, you know, without having a crystal ball. And so I see both sides, which is, you want to make it more and more attractive, but let's not forget, we have some amazing benefits in addition to pension, working here, not to mention the wonderful staff here at Town Hall you get to work with. But.
I think we're a municipality that's sort of like a tweener. We're in between big and small. And I think it's harder for us. I mean, if you're a big municipality, it's pretty stark. And if you're a small, really small one, there's the guy, because I've gone to the AOT one for the last three years and there's one guy from a town somewhere in western New York of four hundred people. And he gets up every time, you know, he's on a town of four hundred people, you know.
That's going to be the loudest town.
Yeah. So, you know, I think we're in an odd, we're sort of in between and it's harder for us.
All right.
So I guess what we're saying is we don't really have a strong feeling about it one way or the other?
Can we abstain on some of them? Like, do you?
I get a paddle.
So you just raise it or no, is it?
I won't bid on this one, then, if that's what the consensus says, okay. Create a dedicated funding source, number six, for commercial drivers license training, CDL training. So this relates to, and this is a common complaint of small municipalities, the requirement to have a CDL license and you're being. This is quite a shortage. Actually, the state, I think, has the larger shortage, quite frankly, because I think when it comes to these types of jobs, folks like to work in their local municipality, perhaps more so than the state because you don't know where you're going to get assigned. But it's costly. We have, you know, over the course of time, we've identified a candidate, we've paid for that CDL training if we thought that was, but there was, you know, an agreement that we would get reimbursed should that, you know, employee not, not stay on for a while. But I think it's a good idea, right? I mean, I think it's, you know, we've had some challenges, especially during the pandemic when, you know, you get a virus runs through the crow, you need to have a bench. All right, amend civil service, number seven, rules to create a more efficient hiring process for public employers. Oh, boy. Let's not get started on civil service and the rules and regulations that pose many unnecessary burdens. I'm reading from the resolution now, to hiring qualified employees to do the work of the people. And so looking to streamline that, make it easier, against, again, this is one of those issues that requires a balance, as many of them do. AOT has worked with other organizations to identify some reforms, civil service reforms that may not undermine union protections in order to ease some of the civil service hiring requirements that can be burdensome or thwart the ability to find candidates. These recommendations include transitioning from provisional to permanent appointments. And they describe that there. Putting a cap on the maximum timeframe for provisional status would help reduce organizational impacts, job uncertainty. I don't know, I like transitional time periods. I think it's, it works well for employee and employer. Remove professions licensed by New York State from the competitive classification. I'm not sure that a lot of that pertains to us.
I think number one.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that comment you just said. That, I mean, this makes sense. I mean, they're just not offering tests for positions frequently, which could be partly because they don't have the staffers to administer the testing. And so, you know, you can't ever get a permanent position in some cases, which affects your pension and whatnot. So I think that this point of, you know, and then if you've been in a provisional spot for a number of years and the test comes out and you don't get in the top three, then you're out, or you could be out.
You could be out, and I don't think necessarily, it all depends on what the demand is. If you take this, this issue and combine it with other issues, the difficulty in finding and attracting people. You could flip that argument on its head and say, the additional time in a transitional period actually helps both the employer and the employee identify whether this is a good working situation.
Well, there's different, there's different ways that you can do that. I mean, you shouldn't have somebody in a position for two, three, four, or five years.
Sure, sure.
And still be determining whether they're fit for the position. So that's, you know, this is really to address those long-term situations where there's, no test has been offered or no test has been developed even in some cases. So I support this one.
Okay. I mean, would we recommend a cap on how long? Not that I want to get up and talk again, but.
Well, I mean, if there's a cap, I mean, it does talk about a cap. It just doesn't say how long they can project the cap to be. But, you know, I mean, if there's a cap, then you have to move on getting the test done or a lot of people look at them permanent.
The top three has always been a problematic issue for a variety of reasons. And, you know, any exam-based system is fraught with issues. I mean, that's why the federal government essentially did away with it. There are still a few agencies that have them, but for the most part, it was counterproductive.
Yeah, but this is not talking about doing away with testing at this point. It's just trying to.
But the state did create the management confidential position to address part of this issue. Now, the only thing is, you don't have, you have some civil service protections, but you don't have the union civil service protections. And it has to do with the way the civil service laws are written. But, you know, it's not as if there isn't a way to do it. It's just, you know.
Yeah, but not every position that's affected is a management confidential position.
That's true. But the state, the state has the option of classifying every position in the state in one way or another. And so.
But I mean, I think this is reasonable.
It's an option to explore how many of these positions really have to be exam-based. And even the ones, like, I was in the tax department and there were people who are accountants who, who wanted to move up, who got, who tested in, went to work. But there wasn't going to be a supervisory test for like five years.
Right.
And they lost a lot of people because, you know, these are people who, you know, have families and were looking for advancement.
Right, right. So that's what I think in putting a cap on it is you got to move along here. You know, you can't have people, hold people in limbo forever. So if there's a cap, whatever, two years, three years or something, you ought to make a decision.
Yep.
On the other hand, we've hired people who weren't in the top three. And the reason we were able to hire them is because we actually had them on a temporary basis. It worked out terrifically well. They acquired the skills and the knowledge and the top three were taken or were not appropriate.
There is the answer right there.
Right.
You still have to clear out those top three.
Right.
So either they have to not take the job or they've already taken a job for some other reason.
Right.
But if those top, one of those top three people did not do that.
Right, but would you have?
Been hired that third person, that provisional. You would not have been hired that third person, that provisional person.
I guess, excuse me, playing devil's advocate. If you compress the time period where you need to make a decision, it doesn't necessarily allow the opportunity for all of those prospective employees to find employment, let's say closer to home or better, or the best situation because it's on a timeframe that needs to occur.
Right, but what this is saying again, it's not when the test has happened and and then you have to hire somebody within a certain period of time. This is someone who has been in the position for oftentimes years and no test has been offered and they cannot get a permanent position, so they're in limbo and as, you know, Bill said, so people leave and they move on, so you lose your people.
Okay, so let's think about a recommendation maybe between now and then of what we might suggest, or at least.
At what, how many years?
Yeah.
We recommend more tests.
What's that?
We recommend more tests.
More tests.
More more frequent tests.
Yeah.
Because if if you're waiting here, like if there hasn't been a test in nine months, like what are we doing here? Like, why are you requiring a test that you're not offering?
Well, I, see, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a catch twenty-two because they're not just offering a test when only two people are interested in taking the test, right? So they need to wait until there's openings, right? There's a need on the local level, right?
It used to be a very regular schedule of tests were just given.
True, true.
And so you might be on a list and then the following year they give the test again and now there's a new list. So, you know, the, just the amount on scheduling of the testing has eroded to such a level. And and I think the second point is also well-taken, that if you, in your example, if you need to be a CPA to get a position, then why do you have to take a test to prove that you're a CPA or whatever it might be, right? So.
And maybe, I don't know, I don't know the format of tests, right, like I don't know, I haven't taken them, so I don't know, going to take the test, what that process looks like. There are plenty of tests that are offered on some sort of regular cadence, like you can go to a testing site and do that. Why can't that exist for something like this, which is going to be a standard test that people are taking? It doesn't have to be, you have the same day that you do it, but you offer it.
Yeah, again, I think they're just waiting to have enough critical mass to to offer the tests so that there are enough applicants. Otherwise, you'll end up at the top three every time they give a test, which wouldn't necessarily.
So the top three, whoever took the test the last time it was offered.
That's right.
Yep.
And maybe that's where the reform has to happen, right, is that, you know, you sort of commingle a timeframe of.
Yeah, it has to, like our discussion, it has to balance the trigger switches to make sure that not everybody, if you score a forty on a hundred test and you're in the top three, that's a bit problematic because then, you know.
Well, could I just suggest that there's seventeen of these that you have to get through and we're only on number seven? And so we don't need to try and rewrite their positions for them.
You don't think every town is giving us the same level of.
Well, maybe, but the time for that is at the meeting.
We don't have anything else to make up, right?
I told you, I told you, you didn't give us a time limit.
You need to fill the time with something.
But not on the.
It sounds like we're generally in support of this one, right?
Yeah, I think so, okay. Provide towns with negotiation authority and pilot agreements that impact their tax base, well, sure, why not?
Yeah, why not?
Why not? I mean, you know, I will say, I will say the IDAs have, you know, play an important role. I mean, I know that, you know, historically, there's been lots of discussion and disagreement about, you know, authority, you know, what they give away in order to attract business. You know, once again, it's, it's a balance. You do want those businesses coming in, these projects. Oftentimes, however, these are large-scale projects and, you know, just ask Rochester. It was great when Kodak was there and then it wasn't so great when they weren't. So I, and I think it's important, you know, the pilot agreements oftentimes provide the incentive for the developers. They don't necessarily really help out municipalities. You know, I would, I would use the Red Hook comments here, which is an important project here, you know, in this municipality. But when you look at the pilot agreement and just how little money we receive from that property, which has at the moment ninety-six units. It's a good example, now that was not a county IDA, so I want to be clear about that. But pilot agreements in general can be bad, they can be fair, and they can be, you know, terrific for the municipality. All depends on how they're constructed. So we're a supportive of eight, sounds good?
Yeah.
Okay, reform inequities in the real property tax cap formula design.
This is what we've seen before too, right?
We've had, we've had different versions of the case that were out of time.
Almost every year, yeah.
It talks about whereas towns are facing significant increases in healthcare market rates, I think you heard me in the last meeting, over the percentages of my time period from twenty-one down to, I think, the lowest was six percent each year. All of these things go into the cap formula and, you know, in particular, one of the things that I think is problematic is those fire districts, special assessment districts, you know, get included in that. And so, you know, if you're contemplating things like, you know, important support for for those entities, the fact that you have to, you know, take, take a look at your tax cap calculation seems to be somewhat comical because anybody who knows anything knows that if you have a volunteer fire company or companies, in our case, the savings from having one is enormous, so. Any other particulars about resolution number nine that jumps out at you that?
Nope, all makes sense.
All makes sense, capital projects, ooh la la, yeah, get factored into it. Okay, resolution number ten, support highway version transportation funding, we're not in support of anything.
That's good.
That's, we just applied for our third funding for the version.
Okay.
Okay. Some of the stats, highway funding, blah, blah, blah. And I will say that, you know, the state has been good about ramping up some of these numbers. So I think it's important to also acknowledge whether it's school funding or highway capital funding, that really they've done a pretty good job of increasing. Okay, resolution number twelve, who would like to scream this one out loud? Provide all towns with the option.
I thought I had one, five things down, but I think I missed eleven.
Eleven. I think I skipped it on purpose, didn't I?
My bad.
Twelve is more interesting.
Eleven, increase or repeal the tax levy limits for highway equipment purchases, sort of a similar argument there. There's a, not many people know. Highway law two seventy-one imposes a general sixty thousand dollar limitation on a town's authority to levy taxes to fund certain highway equipment. And if you've seen some of the equipment that we've purchased recently, you know sixty thousand dollars is.
Doesn't go long.
Doesn't go long. That limit was set back in nineteen fifty-nine. Need for safe roads, blah, 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 rising costs of equipment, the tax cap complications.
Yeah, makes, makes sense.
Right, I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot of.
I mean, even to just do an inflation adjustment, right, makes sense, if nothing else.
Okay, so this would be the time to. So two things. Resolution number twelve, right, provide all towns with the option to set speed limits on local roads. And as you know, I've worked with my colleagues in the county and other municipalities to get this message across, how important it is. Also, the county has done the same. This is a statewide issue, we've been treated as second-class citizens. If you're a municipality with a population of fifty thousand or more, or if you are a village, you can set your own speed limits. If you are a town. You have, as my Italian ancestors used to say, you've got ungas, you've got nothing. So.
This was on last year's, wasn't it?
It's been on in the last few, you know, I think I sold on this one as well.
Yeah, a few years.
So I did want to update you because, as you know, we've been sort of waiting for one of our engineers to coordinate with us to. We had success on those residential subdivisions, I mean, speed limits. Now looking at a townwide and they recently worked with the village on theirs as well. So they have given us two choices and I'll, I'll tell you what those choices are because there is some thinking now because, just to roll back the videotape for a while, we we advocated for two things, one is to get a lower numerical number to be permitted in townships, which was twenty-five, it used to be thirty, right? So even if you were advocating for thirty-five lower, you could only get to thirty. Got down to twenty-five and and the legislation allowed for municipalities to provide speed studies and then to propose, well, of course, you know what happens, the state, which doesn't have enough workers, right? We just read this in the resolution, started getting a lot of applications. They are now looking at some changes. Those changes, God willing, will include allowing perhaps towns of different sizes, perhaps rows of of certain types in order to have the option to set the speed limits, maybe. We'll see how that goes. They hope to get new guidance from the state in the next several months on this issue. We can, and I'll be looking for some guidance from you all next week on whether or not we want to just go ahead as we had planned to do townwide, to lower, to do some speed studies on indicative roads and then submit that. Because the the more we wait, if they don't make any substantive changes, the longer it's going to take for this to get done. Or we wait to see what the new guidance, a little bit like we did with the Wedlands, let's see what the state's going to come out with and see if that suffices. Suffice it to say, I don't think we need to discuss number twelve, we all know that this has been a passion project for us.
We feel that you couldn't say anything bad about this.
Okay, resolution thirteen, create a dedicated funding program for municipal and water and sewer infrastructure. Obviously, we, we took action on that.
I'm not saying anything bad about this either.
Yeah.
Fourteen.
They say there are only two things in life, death and taxes, maybe it's four, water and sewer should be added, okay. Resolution number fourteen, reform public service law article eight. Okay, so this is, you know, again, one of those where you're trying to balance home rule with goals, objectives, not only of the state, but obviously of mankind to create more renewable energy projects. The state in its infinite wisdom decided certain large projects should be under their jurisdiction. Projects, solar projects, for example, that are twenty-five meg, utility scale. Nothing that we're doing here is of that magnitude, but some of these can be significant. Now, obviously, there's, you know, changes in technology and so you're getting greater efficiency from the solar panels, provided we still get solar panels in the future. But these can be significant and and some municipalities, they're meaning a lot of resistance from the community. So this resolution seeks to give more local control on signing. Balance of interests and objectives.
Think back from the town of four hundred people probably speaking on this, think back from the town of four hundred people, I mean.
It could be, well, I mean, you know, these. On the other hand, you know, it can be efficient. Obviously, solar and battery backup and, you know, we mentioned, we'll be talking about adopting or proposing some legislation around that topic as well. But it's all about efficiency and scale and we're not meeting our goals statewide in time, so it's a, a balance, right, Julie? What say you on this one?
I'm torn on this one, I see the agreements on both sides. And I, and I'm not familiar enough with the particulars of, you know, what the requirements are to overturn a local law.
Yeah.
I think it's another one where we remain silent and recognizing the complexity of the issue.
Yeah. Yeah, it's tricky because you have municipalities who, if they have complete local control, won't it? And it'll move like everything else, whether it's a tax burden or a major solar project, it just shifts, it doesn't change.
Right, and it will slow things down. Right, and on the other hand, I think there are legitimate cases where, you know, environmental justice concerns and community concerns need to be heard and elevated and I want to make sure that there's a process for that.
Right. Anything more on this side of the table? Number fifteen, support dedicated funding for PFAS testing remediation and prevention. Luckily, not an issue that we currently are facing. Knock on wood. Testing was, oh, just a few weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've never had it, but I can say that the testing is not cheap either. And we are not exempt from the testing, we were grandfathered into a, we originally, when they first started, it was quarterly and they're about five or six hundred dollars per well. And then because we had cleaned for a year or two, now we do it on an annual basis. But they're not cheap to do and I can understand why it would be a good idea to have some, some funding, especially for smaller municipalities or municipalities that have had issues in the past, who are getting tested quarterly.
Yeah, it's one of the, what's that?
I think this, I support this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's certainly one of those issues that it's not likely to impact most communities, but for if you are impacted, the costs is. And we're all in this together, right? You never know when you're going to wake up to a community and have this issue. Okay, conversely, from fourteen, we have sixteen, foster opportunities for small-scale renewable energy development in participating towns. CLCP is referenced as a goal to generate at least seventy percent of its electricity from renewable energy sources by twenty thirty and achieve a hundred percent, excuse me, zero emission electricity by twenty forty. Renewable energy projects that are not under the jurisdiction of, or as a critical state programs like clean energy communities. So the reason this is on there, as we all know, is that, to go back to my Italian ancestors again, Alasta, they've stopped the clean energy communities funding. And so I think there's now a movement afoot to demonstrate just how effective that program was. And you look at all the projects that we've done and I will point this out because I did read somewhere, folks, somebody said in reference to us, so that the town is about to squander more money on solar panels or something like that, on solar development. I'd like the folks to know that all of our renewable projects are LED, purchase of LED lights. All of that has saved the taxpayer significant dollars. It's integral to the reason that folks here in the town of Red Hook actually pay less in taxes in twenty twenty-five than they did in twenty fifteen. It's because we put in place a lot of these programs, whether it was the community solar, whether, again, buying the streetlights. whether, again, buying the streetlights, whether it was retrofitting this building with insulation and transitioning away from fossil fuels to do the air source heat pumps. All of that has made it painfully clear. If you are confused about this issue or listening to a certain TV or reading a certain thing, there is nothing more financially sustainable and affordable than transitioning to clean energy, clean transportation. All of these technologies have come down dramatically in price, whether it's solar panels or whether it's EV batteries. And they save folks and taxpayers tremendous dollars. So this resolution, which supports projects like the community solar that we'll be doing on Cooking Ham, I don't think we have much to say except let's go for it.
Yep.
There is one thing to say, we need more of it.
We need more of it, exactly.
I was one of the last people to get into our CSA that we have.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, I pay a lot less in electric bills than most of the other people in town.
You absolutely do.
And I am very grateful and I can't believe that people would be critical of that, especially with everything else and costs going up on everything else. So, you know, from my perspective, to the extent that there's appropriate locations, we should be having, you know, more than just Cooking Ham in our CSA.
Yeah, well, that's the goal. A handful of these, not everywhere, but a handful of these properly signed. Okay. Provide guidance and resources for best battery energy storage system. So this is complimentary. I sent you all, by the way.
That NYSARDA thing you sent.
A training on microburns. Webinar, did I send that to you? Okay, let me circulate that again. I know I sent it to the Energy Committee. It's all about creating microburns.
Wasn't the draft law that you sent out that we discussed?
Model law.
The model law, I'm sorry.
From NYSARDA.
NYSARDA, isn't that fall within this arena?
Yeah, and I think it's important that, you know, this is an emerging topic and so a lot of municipalities are interested in learning more about it, the pros and cons. But like with the solar, they introduced a model solar law 10, 12, 15 years ago? Good Lord. Probably more than that now. I think a lot of municipalities I know, again, if you go back to the super residents, mayors looking for guidance on this topic and so, and we're starting to see that. So I think it would be good for us to support Resolution number 17 because I think, I hope someday we'll be looking at doing battery storage. Certainly can help us out in times of.
A lot to think about with it.
Trouble.
You know, unfortunately, a system or place like this burned in the California fire. So there's a lot of cleanup issues around that, so.
Over the batteries.
Yeah.
Yeah. All emerging technology has learning curves.
All the information that they can get to us is, you know, good.
More better.
Exactly, yep.
So those are the 17. How'd we do, Christine? Pretty good. You talked them through? Good guidance.
Speaking of Christine, do you want to go back to the other Christine about the?
I think she's, she's still, she's still aware of that.
I'm here. But I, Robert, I sent you, I don't know if you can open your email, but I, so you can look at it, but I sent you a revision to consider. And then I can read it to you.
Did we give you sufficient time?
Yeah, did you hear me? I sent you an email.
Yeah.
You see that?
There you go. I have two of them.
You have two of them? What do you mean?
Oh, one's LGE, sorry.
Oh, I just copied you on the, I sent the.
On the other one?
The typo correction on the other one, yeah, yeah. You don't have to do anything with that. It's just follow up because you need it in the morning.
Resolution authorizing submission of an application for the US Local Government Efficiency Grant. Town and the Village of Red Haven entered a shared, provides sewer.
We have to read it better because I can't read it from here.
Oh, you can't read it, sorry. Whereas the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook have entered into a shared service agreement to provide for sewer services and municipal sewer infrastructure in support of the development of affordable workforce housing, addressing septic system discharges and development within the TND, consistent with the Centers in Green Space Plan. And whereas additional funding is required, da, 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 da. Whereas it is in the best interest of the town to submit an application on behalf of the town and village in a total amount of, to finance a portion of the cost of the project. I mean, it's better.
That sounds good.
I think it sounds good. My only suggestion would be to write out traditional neighborhood district rather than using the acronym.
Chris, did you hear that?
You, oh, you want to say traditional neighborhood district?
Yeah.
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 And then we don't use the word TND again, so we just can spell it out.
Yeah.
Got it? We'll make that, you know, correction.
That correction.
Yeah, I'll send that when I send it to the clerk, okay?
The only, the only problem is now we have to remember if this was nine or 10.
It was nine. Because that's why I put nine at the top of the page, because that's what you said earlier.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
I'm listening.
So moved.
Christine is moved and Bill has seconded. Any other further discussion? If not.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, fingers crossed, people. Thank you, Christine. Okay, we're going to get rid of that, shall we? Let's go back to where we were. I think at this point, just, folks, if you would take a look at, we just received updated police services agreement for 2025. I will note the two changes in that. It coincides with the increase in the budget that I put in and you were so kind to approve in the last budget cycle, $100,000 annual. And that would be my recommendation to just clarify that. I think it's on page three, section four, payment. It says the town of Red Hook shall reimburse the village of Red Hook the agreed upon sum of, maybe make it agreed upon annual sum of, so that it's clear. I don't think we want to get one of these bills every week. What has changed somewhat substantially is the hourly wage for the appearance in court. And we recognize that costs associated with all labor wages have increased substantially and they're trying to capture the, you know, the all-in costs on the 75 per hour benefits and so on and so forth, 95 if it's overtime. By the way, I'm not asking you to approve this tonight. I'm asking you to just take a look at this and it'll be on the agenda for next week. And then 95 for overtime.
What were the previous numbers?
55.
So it's a $20 per hour increase.
20 or 40.
It was, there wasn't a four hour minimum last time, was there?
Yeah, there was.
Oh, there was?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't remember that.
They've, yeah, so they have a contract negotiation. They negotiated this. I mean, I've already expressed myself on this issue. I'm not crazy about paying for time when.
So the overtime.
Folks aren't working. I mean, I, my druthers would have been, because court oftentimes takes an hour and a half, two, two hours. My druthers would have been that they could just then hop in the car and, you know, travel throughout the township and, you know, have a presence and be available for calls afterwards instead of just, I'm assigned for four hours, but that's, you know, this is, this is the issue with the, you know, the negotiation happens with the village. Village controls all that.
So you mean to tell me.
I'm very supportive of our local police.
So you mean to tell me if court is over in two hours, that, that officer is not out patrolling? He's sitting in the village hall or something for two more hours? I highly doubt that.
I'm just saying the services we get aren't just for court.
And so are you saying that this is non-negotiable because it's through their union agreement?
Well, I think that one thing here is that it's, the overtime is conflated a bit, right? It's talking about special cases and providing court officer services. So I'm curious whether all of that's bundled together and they're counting the four hours for courts with whatever else, like it seems like they should be separate.
No, we get a separate.
We shouldn't have to pay overtime for the four hours of court when they're here for two hours.
That, that's, but if it's a four hour minimum, you're paying four minimum regular time.
Yeah.
So when we get the bill of the vouchers, there's always a separate voucher for the court time. It's generally the same amount every time and I would expect to see this.
Well, that's what it's going to be. It's going to be, well, unless they're trying to lump the overtime.
Unless there's more, there's more than four hours.
Yeah.
So the four hours, that's a $75 rate and then anything above and beyond, that would be 95? Or is it dependent on the hours worked by the individual officer during that pay period?
Well, that's what I'm wondering is, it talks about work in special cases and, you know, while providing court officer services. I think they should be separate things, right? I mean, I don't think court is the thing that's pushing them over into overtime.
What is?
Our court isn't.
No, but if a judge remands somebody into custody and I witnessed it once here.
Yeah.
That was a third drug and driving, whatever. You have to transport that person down to Poughkeepsie? They have to be processed at the jail? That is a time-consuming activity. So that would be, I think, the special circumstance would put it over. I don't know how often it happens, you know, if they ask the judges, but.
But I think that's the thing that it's not clear from this, how they're actually going to bill that. Like, I don't think that the, what's here, right, 75 or 95, really reflects sort of a salary, like normal number of hours that you're working.
Well, I guess my understanding was it's 75, basically, if it's a standard four, if it's a minimum four hours, it's 75 times four per officer and there's two, right? So when we get those bills, yeah, so we get those bills where generally they look the same.
Yeah.
If there was a time when someone got remanded or there was some other issue that pushed them over, it would be higher.
Yeah.
And that would be 95 per officer.
I mean, again, I go back to, on behalf of the taxpayer, I don't know why we're paying for time that is not in service. It's, it's part of our agreement and I will say that they negotiated their contract. You know, I've been in contract negotiations. I know that can be a challenge, but these rates are not the rates in the contract. These are the rates they're charging us.
Yeah, why are we letting the village negotiate our rates?
Well, because it's their police force.
But, but what I'm saying is like they're negotiating this, like if they want to cover that, they should negotiate the reimbursement cost with us.
Oh, this isn't in the CBA?
No, the 75 in that, no, it's not in the CBA. No, 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 this is them trying to capture.
What they're.
With the all-in costs based upon a scheduled four hours as opposed to a work four hours. And I just find, I, I.
Yeah, that's not.
I can't, I can't support that.
How do these rates compare to other, let me contract that this county sheriff's office?
Yeah, we often get quotes from.
Do we know, are they comparable or we don't know that right now?
We haven't had the update for 2025 yet.
Okay.
We can, we can go out and, you know, ask for those.
Okay. Well, it's just we, we don't vote on tonight, so it would be important to have a background.
Well, and I think, kind of to Jacob's point, I think that there are two issues that we're raising questions about. One is the actual amount that we're paying for the services that we receive. And the other is a drafting issue in the agreement where it's maybe unclear in here what is being received, what we're being charged for. So it would be good, for sure, we have to be able to resolve the second and maybe we can make some progress on the first.
Yeah, because the way, the way they wrote it made it sound like that was a part of the CBA.
Yeah, and it's also not clear to me what triggers overtime in this situation or what we're really paying for what, so maybe a little revision is in there.
So did we have a draft of this by November 1st, 2025?
November of 25 hasn't come up yet. This is the 25.
Next year, I was thinking this. So did we, but did we have a version of this November 1st, 2024?
No.
Yeah.
It says that we may negotiate annually the fees charged, but I'm curious what sort of negotiation the village is envisioning for.
Here.
For that, right? Because, I mean, if you want to have a negotiation, let's have a negotiation. Talk about what your bill is.
Now they raise it from 90 to 100 for the year.
Well, and I want to, I want to remind you, this is all done in context with, in three years, we're going to have a court consolidation. So, you know, we're going to be paying for ostensibly more court hours. The question then becomes, are we, are we paying for hours worked? Are we paying for hours scheduled? And again, I go back to, I don't understand if court will last two hours while the officer just can't then go in the, you know, in a car and patrol and have a presence seems to me to be reasonable expectation for both the employee and for the taxpayer that there's a service provided throughout those four.
And I guess that, that sort of is the question, right, is are they doing that or are they just waiting?
What, what are they actually doing?
Are we paying them twice?
Right.
Like, are they getting their normal paycheck plus the court?
Right, do they go home after the court? So that's a good question.
It may not be them, but it may be the village.
I do think it's fair to address this proactively because when is a consolidated court? It's still a village police department. It's not our police department.
Right.
But if the court is handling both and say the court is here in town, I think we have a dog in that fight.
Right.
When they negotiate their CBA, I think that's something that we have, it's a fair right for us to be participating, even though we're not the employing agency, I think, I think we should have a voice in that. At least related to court services, not the other things.
I really want to know where the overtime comes into this because I think if you're scheduling these hours and you're scheduling four hours, right? Like, how are they calculating where overtime is? Like, when is that sort of coming into effect? Is it like Bill was saying, if they're taking someone?
Well, no, it's shift, it's shift work. So the way shift work, you know, there's three shifts. I think they're really a two-shift police department, but they look at the shift that covers, so court is at five, runs, starts at 5:30 in the afternoon, usually goes to about 8:00.
Four to six, six to eight, you know, whatever.
Yeah, but they come, they're here at 5:30. So they're not having somebody who comes to work at 8:00 in the morning. And we, no, that's not how it works. They're, they're working the four hours of, that they calculate for court and the four hours before that.
Yeah.
So the way they come up with their overtime is if they're in, the way I understand it is, when the court goes beyond that, or say they have to transport a prisoner down to Poughkeepsie or maybe in some cases to Hudson, because there have been some things that have been on the border, then that's, that would be, that's where they would calculate. It's always the amount over the regular shift.
And so we're going to account for the hours under, the court doesn't go every other week.
Well, it's, it's twice a month, the ones for, just for vehicle, for traffic and the others for criminal.
Yeah.
I would say the criminal, the criminal one is, is busy.
Yeah. I would, I would really like to see something from the village indicating sort of what they're actually doing. I want, I want to know, like, how many times has there been the overtime portion of that? Before they're going to sort of incorporate this into the agreement and.
And they should, they should have those records because even if it's a new CBA, the old CBA would have said, you know, they have X number of shifts and, you know, how's, how they assign shifts. And shift work is also, depending on your seniority and other things, there's, they're a small police department. But my sense is they should have information about historical information, how much overtime is paid, how many hours, you know.
Yeah, and I think that for them to be including this in this agreement, I, they have to be thinking about it. Right, there has to be something that they're trying to solve for. It's either we're using a lot of overtime and they hadn't been, you know, having us pay them for it or.
I don't think so.
There, I don't know. But it just feels like there has to be something there for this to be a part of it unless it's just a random consideration, which I would like an answer about. I would like to know why it's here and sort of what the, you know, the real, the real life application of this would be. I would like an answer about it, I would like to know why it's here and sort of what the, you know, the real, the real life, uh, application of this would be compared to what has been in place in the past.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't think. You know, there's a lot of legacy issues that I think we would address.
Well, it's almost a twenty, it's almost a twenty-five percent increase. I mean, I think we have the right to ask some questions to back that up, so.
Well, it's also a challenge when you think of there's a police force for a square mile. But not for the other thirty-five square miles.
No, but we do.
And it raises the issue, you know, once again, as, as our villages, you know, struggle with trying to, um, finance, you know, basic and important services. It becomes a, a, a challenge, I think, you know.
They do provide though, if you look at that monthly, I mean, in fairness, if you look at the monthly, uh, sheets of, of all the calls. They're doing a ton of work and they don't have any village calls in that, in that monthly sheet. So they spend a lot of time, you know, through the town.
Cause we're only getting the town list. They have a separate village.
Oh, yeah, of course they do, but I'm just saying, the town list is, is wordy.
We're probably seeing one part of the workload.
Sure, sure, sure. But it's, it's also part of the difficulty is assessing, it's a little bit like with that, you know, county and EMS and all that. How do you, how do you properly allocate number of calls, hours, so on and so forth? It's a challenge when you have the small municipality then making these arrangements. If it were a town police force, I'm not suggesting we do that, but if it were a town police force, then all of those issues go away because the town.
Everybody.
Everybody get, you know, the villagers contribute towards, towards that, and so you don't have these. And certainly we don't want to offend our partners in the village and, and, um, the officers, um, do, do a really terrific job when they're here, so.
I, I would say there is, there is an issue about shift work in contract CBAs. And I just know this from when I lived on Allen, the Nassau County Police and Suffolk County Police, they were always contentious, you read about it in the, in the, uh, in the news day. Always contentious issues about what they negotiated, what was a shift. And so there were many officers who wanted to work a ten-hour shift and then have a day off, you know? And so I don't know what was negotiated, I haven't seen the CBA, but I do know that the issue of shifts and what constitutes a shift is, is sort of a critical.
Sure, sure, but I think what we want to be clear that we have no issue.
No, we don't.
We don't want people being called into work for an hour.
No, of course.
And getting paid for that, that's not the issue.
But it would be helpful to know what they consider a shift in the context of this overtime and four-hour minimum.
Because this is something that is predictable, right? It's on a regular cadence, court happens the same day of the month, you know, as, as you go through. It's something that you can account for, the hours that it's typically scheduled for, and maybe there is the exception where they have to drive to Poughkeepsie or drive to Hudson or something like that. But where that's being, you know, considered here, right? They're, they're sort of thinking about that, but we don't have any information about how it's being considered. I think what you're saying about knowing how the shifts work, but also I think, I think that this is something that is sort of easily accounted for in most cases. Like, unless they come back and they say, you know, we've been making trips down to Poughkeepsie every other week for months and months, like, I would like to know that. Like, that's something that seems reasonable if it's happening, but I don't think we have the indication that it is happening.
We don't have the data?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the data is important, but I just think fundamentally I have a problem with, I don't have a problem with minimum hours. Somebody gets called into work, I have a problem with the fact that we're paying on a per-hour basis, some of which is not work dependent on that, that doesn't make sense to me.
And if you're thinking, if you're thinking about the shift, or if you're, like, if what you're saying, Bill, is like, you plan to have the shift start at five-thirty before court starts, you know your shift is going to be X number of hours.
That's true.
Right, if you're starting it with court, you know that when court ends, you can go to other things. So why are we paying the minimum if it's not actually?
No, I, I know, like, I mean, I, it's a fair question and, uh, I don't think we have enough.
Or, or if you think, hey, we're not meeting the amount you need, let's address that in the agreed upon sum of X number of dollars divided in a bill monthly.
Which we keep rationing up each year, I mean, I think that's important, you know, it's double.
The annual?
Yeah, yeah, it's double when I started, so. And I, I recognize that, that, um, you know, we have demand for the services and, you know, they provide really good services. So, um, I think that's important, I think, that clear, it's just, whether it's this arrangement or another IMA, we want to make sure that we're paying for services rendered for that time period. I, I'm uncomfortable with this aspect of it, and it seems we all are.
Maybe it's something where, you know, that, that amount gets folded into the sum generally, right? We know that we're going to get these services and there is the overtime portion of it, right? It's beyond sort of the hours that are normally allocated for court. Maybe that's a better way of doing it, right? Cause you know, you're going to be here for X number of hours, we're sort of accounting that we're going to pay you, you know, for this work, it's folded in there, but like.
Yeah.
If you go beyond, that's, that's where the additional billing happens. And then we'd have good information about that, where we would know this happens at the days where that happens, there's an additional bill, we have that information, it's something that we can actually monitor. Cause currently we don't really have that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with three hundred dollars for two hours or what's four times ninety-five?
What's our timeframe for moving to, make a decision on this? Do we do it next week at next week's meeting?
Well, I think, I think we need some. Well, you know, as soon as we can, but I think we need to, to iron this out with the village and.
Okay, so until such a. Does the prior agreement just continue?
Yeah, right, so.
Prior.
Yeah, they're not gonna, they're not, not. Um, I think we should have some continuing, uh, contract language however, uh, which we don't have in here. So I think it would probably be wise to include that. So let's see if we can mark this up, remember the rates, the hourly's or the, what they proposed, there are not what's in their CBA. So we don't necessarily have to say yea or nay to them.
Okay.
Right? We talked that one through. Uh, last, uh, piece of correspondence from the Red Hook Central School District. Uh, just to notify us, although I think we all know that it was about to, uh, adopt the real property tax exemption as, as the town did, uh, previously for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers. Under New York State Real Property Tax Law four sixty-six A. And, um, they enclosed a copy of their resolution, congratulations to both the school district and to the volunteer fire companies. Once again, working to, uh, achieve our shared goals. On that note.
There's one other thing.
Oh, Jacob, please.
So let's say at the tree preservation commission meeting, um, a few of the committee members, um, asked about, um, donating bluebird boxes for, um.
Sorry, donating what?
Bluebird boxes, so, so for, um, you know, houses for bluebirds. So both the boxes and posts from the different committee members for, um, on the Cooking Ham property, sort of down by where the, the pond is. Um, sort of across from the barn, like the other side of the trail there.
Okay.
So that was something that was raised, you know, they were walking on the trails, they saw that there are bluebirds there, thought that it might be a nice sort of addition to that, to provide some, um, boxes for them around that area.
Couldn't they, can they, uh?
Write something down?
Right, put it on a map.
Yeah.
Around that area.
That was one thing you sort of talked about is, I, I was trying to get a sense of the best setting for it. But yeah, I can get back, cause I would say where, and I, I guess I wanted to raise that here, knowing that, um, you know, there are portions of that that are, that's sort of in the, the wetlands buffer, I think, is where, where that would, or the, the water supply buffer. Is that area, but I don't know, it was something that I said I would bring to, to the board, I don't know if there's any thoughts on.
Well, I have certain, I mean, bluebirds have certain requirements for, they have to be close enough to wooded areas or purchase, so you can't put them like in the middle of the field and expect.
Yeah, yeah, no, these are, these are, um, there was a lot of discussion about birds at the meeting last night. They're, they're definitely.
Off-bend, yeah.
Really interested in not just trees, but also.
The other question I have is that the, some of our existing bluebird boxes, like at Rec Park West, are maintained by one of the local bird clubs. And they, they, if they are not maintained and kind of cleaned out annually, they get colonized by less desirable species of birds or rodents or whatever. And so just knowing what the plan is for maintenance, I think would be.
Yeah, and I think that there was interest in helping to maintain them, obviously it's something we'd want to consider as sort of a, a long-term plan. And maybe, you know, maybe there's something that's sort of formalized in some way, but, um, I think there was an interest in sort of doing it and also taking care for it, sort of where the, the thought comes from.
I think it's great we have people who have good working knowledge of these topics, cause I'm not one of them, so it's really great to have the advice.
So I can get back to them, sort of see what they're thinking in terms of locations and sort of what it would look like, there were, I mean, there was talks, I mean, it was.
Maps and dots and.
It was a bunch of like.
Patients and meetings.
Yeah, well, and if they could reach out to, I, I don't know if, um, you know, who, who at the rec department or somebody, you know, we get those updates in the rec report.
Oh, yeah, John's done, you know.
The Rob Waterman Bird Club or whatever it is, just making sure that they, they're in contact.
See if I can find it.
Yeah.
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 I know that, it definitely seems like they are well familiar with the maintenance of the boxes and sort of like how many, you know, broods and chicks you can have.
Right.
In a given year, like, oh, you could have as many as three, depending on if one takes or one fails.
We already have some around town, right?
So the time's. Yeah.
Did you want to do these as question points or?
Nope.
Okay.
That's up for the next meeting.
Okay.
Folks, I think that's all we have for tonight.
It's a nice end with bluebirds, okay? Yeah, it's very positive.
Um, I want to remind you, Repair Cafe is this Saturday, right, Julia?
Yep.
At the Red Hook Community Center. And so we look forward to that. We want to also thank you for your patience. I think for the first time in my memory, uh, weather-related, um, our troopers at the, uh, recycling center, we had to close this morning because it was so cold. And, you know, they're out there in all kinds of weather, um, but we had to take the day off for their safety. It was, I don't know about at your household, but at the farm, clocked it at eighteen below at one point in the morning. So, uh, for their safety, we did close this Wednesday and we apologize, you know, maybe we can see if we can get some extended time on Saturday. If not, uh, we appreciate your patience. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we close tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.